The October 12th, 2023 meeting of the Alabama State Board of Education will now come to oral. Father Morgan Clark, Associate Rector of Christ Church Anglican located in Montgomery, will now offer the invocation.
Thank you, Governor Ivey. Thank you, State Board of Education, for the privilege and honor that it is to open this meeting by invoking our Lord. So let us pray together. Father, we stand before you this morning asking for your providence, your mercy, and your blessing in this meeting of the Alabama State Board of Education. Thank you for this morning that you've given us. Thank you for each person in this room, and we thank you for the gift of education and for the joy of learning. You are the source of all truth, all goodness, and all beauty. So as this Board of Education meets this morning, we ask you to reveal your truth, your goodness, and your beauty to us. Where there is falsehood, show us your truth. Where there is hatred and injustice, show us your goodness. And where there is a lack of wonder or creativity, show us your beauty. We ask you to guide, govern, and direct this meeting, give each person in this room ears to listen to each other, eyes to see each other, and minds to think together about the questions and concerns raised today. But above all, give us all your grace, because without you, we do not know the way that we should go. So give us grace this morning, we pray, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Father Morgan. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance to the United States flag. Attention, salute, and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Darrington, please call the roll.
Present.
Dr. Richardson.
Present.
Dr. O'Neal.
Present.
Mrs. May.
Present.
Mrs. McRae.
Present.
Dr. Reynolds.
Here.
Dr. Richardson.
Present.
Mrs. West.
Here.
Mrs. C.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Darrington. We'll now consider our motion to approve the agenda for the October 12th, 2023 meeting of the State Board of Education.
Does that move?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, show by raised hand. All those opposed, show by like sign.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. We'll now consider a motion to approve the minutes from the September 14th, 2023 meeting of the Alabama State Board of Education. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, show by raised hand. All those opposed, show by like sign.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. Ms. Darrington, is anyone signed up to speak today?
There are no spoken speakers.
Thank you. Ms. Darrington, is there any unfinished business?
There's no unfinished business.
We move to new business. We'll now consider a resolution in recognition of Mr. Daniel Barrentine, Principal of George W. Long High School located in Dale County School System and State Board District Two, as Alabama's 2023 High School Principal of the Year. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved, Governor.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Governor, I'd just like to take a moment and acknowledge Superintendent Ben Baker is here today from Dale County, and I want to congratulate Principal Barrentine in what a great honor it is to have the Principal of the Year come from Dale County schools. So thank you, sir, for being with us today.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, show by raised hand. All those opposed, show by like sign.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Barrentine. We'll now consider a resolution in recognition of Ms. Mallory Kincaid, Assistant Principal of Auburn Junior High School located in Auburn City School System and State Board District Two, as Alabama's 2023 Assistant Principal of the Year. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved, Governor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to congratulate Mrs. Kincaid, and I believe that she is not with us today. I have not seen...
Oh, yes, right there in front of me.
Yes, wonderful. We're so glad you're here today. Congratulations. I know that you are now a principal, correct, of an elementary school. So well-deserved honor, and thank you so much for what you do for children every day.
Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved, Governor.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, show by raised hand. All those opposed, show by like sign.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. Congratulations, Ms. Kincaid. We'll now consider a resolution in recognition of Mr. Tony Barnes, Principal of Russellville Middle School located in the Russellville City School System and State School Board District Seven, as Alabama's 2023 Middle School Principal of the Year. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, show by raised hand. All those opposed, show by like sign.
Unanimous vote, Governor.
Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Barnes. We'll now consider a resolution in recognition of Ms. Carissa E. Lang, Principal of Crestline Elementary School located in the Hartzell City School System and State Board District Seven, as Alabama's 2023 National Association of Elementary School Principals, National Distinguished Principal. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
I gladly make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, show by raised hand. All those opposed, by like sign.
Unanimous vote.
Congratulations, Ms. Lang. Item E, we will now consider a resolution in recognition of Ms. Melanie A. Harris, Assistant Principal of Hibbett Intermediate School located in the Florence City School System and State School Board District Seven, as Alabama's 2023 National Association of Elementary School Principals, National Outstanding Assistant Principal. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
We have a motion to adopt the resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, show by raised hand. All those opposed, show by like sign.
Unanimous vote, Governor.
Congratulations, Ms. Harris. We'll now consider a resolution proclaiming October 2023 as Principals' Month in Alabama. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, show by the raised hand. All those opposed, by like sign.
Unanimous vote, Governor.
Thank you. We'll now consider a resolution of distinguished recognition for the 2022 Alabama School Counseling Program of Distinction for Kimberly Wyndham and Diana Watchaunoo, School Counselors at Baldwin County Virtual School located in the Baldwin County School System and State School Board District One. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, show by raised hand. All those opposed, by like sign.
Unanimous vote, Governor.
Congratulations, Ms. Wyndham and Ms. Watchaunoo. We'll now consider a resolution of distinguished recognition for the 2022 Alabama School Counseling Program of Distinction for Ms. Kimberly Powell and Ms. Natalie Ward, School Counselors at Bill Forest Elementary School located in the Baldwin County School System and the State School Board District One. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, show by raised hand. All those opposed, by like sign.
Unanimous vote, Governor.
Thank you. Congratulations, Ms. Powell and Ms. Ward. We'll now consider a resolution of distinguished recognition for the 2022 Alabama School Counseling Program of Distinction for Ms. Kelly Chisholm, School Counselor at Robbins Elementary School located in the Mobile County School System and State School Board District Five. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, show by raised hand. All those opposed, by like sign.
Unanimous vote, Governor.
Congratulations, Ms. Chisholm. We'll now consider a resolution of distinguished recognition for the 2022 Alabama School Counseling Program of Distinction for Ms. Laura Rankhorn, School Counselor at Areb Elementary School located in the Areb City School System and State Board School District Six. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
I make that motion. A second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, show by raised hand. All those opposed, show by like sign.
Unanimous vote, Governor.
Congratulations, Ms. Rankhorn. We will now consider a resolution of distinguished recognition for the 2022 Alabama School Counseling Program of Distinction for Ms. Kelly Cutner, School Counselor at Gonzales Middle School located in the Gonzales City School System and State School Board District Six. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So made.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, show by raised hand. All those opposed, show by like sign.
Unanimous vote, Governor.
Congratulations, Ms. Cutner. We'll now consider a resolution of distinguished recognition for the 2022 Alabama School Counseling Program of Distinction for Ms. Kim Crumley, School Counselor at Parkside School located in Coleman County School System and State School Board District Six. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
I make that motion. Make that motion, thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, show by raised hand. All those opposed, by like sign.
Unanimous vote.
Congratulations, Ms. Crumley. We'll now consider a resolution of distinguished recognition for the 2022 Alabama School Counseling Program of Distinction for Ms. Angela Chandler, School Counselor at Rock Quarry Elementary School located in the Tuscaloosa City School System and State School Board District Seven. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, show by raised hand. All those opposed, by like sign.
Unanimous vote, Governor.
Congratulations, Ms. Chandler. We'll now consider a resolution of distinguished recognition for the 2022 Alabama School Counseling Program of Distinction for Ms. Sarah Spear, School Counselor at Huntsville Junior High School located in the Huntsville City School System and State School Board District Eight. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
I so move, Governor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, show by raised hand. All opposed, show by like sign.
Unanimous vote, Governor.
Congratulations, Ms. Spear. Now we'll consider a resolution in recognition of Ms. Jennifer Broadhead of Edgewood Elementary School located in the Homewood City School System and State School Board District Four, as Alabama's 2023 History Teacher of the Year. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, show by raised hand. All those opposed, by like sign.
Unanimous vote.
Congratulations, Ms. Broadhead. We will now consider a resolution honoring Ms. Martha Jenny Donahue for being selected as Barbara Fanny Memorial Employee of the Quarter for October through December 2023. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, show by raised hand. All those opposed, by like sign.
Unanimous vote, Governor.
Congratulations, Ms. Donahue. Now we'll consider a resolution to recognize October 9th through 13th, 2023 as National School Lunch Week in Alabama schools. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So move, Governor Wayne Reynolds.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, show by raised hand. All those opposed, show by like sign.
Unanimous vote, Governor.
Thank you. We will now consider a resolution to recognize October 2023 as Dyslexia Awareness Month in Alabama schools. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, show by raised hand. All those opposed, show by like sign.
Unanimous vote, Governor.
Thank you. We'll now consider a resolution proclaiming October 1st through 31st, 2023 as Manufacturing Month in Alabama schools. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, show by raised hand. All those opposed, by like sign.
Unanimous vote, Governor.
Thank you. We'll now consider a resolution endorsing October 16th through 2023 as Alabama School Bus Safety Week. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, show by raised hand. All those opposed, by like sign.
Unanimous vote, Governor.
Thank you. Item U, we will now consider a resolution naming Alabama's 2023 Science of Reading Spotlight Schools. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, show by raised hand. All those opposed, show by like sign.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. We will now consider a motion to approve the Fiscal Year 2025 Foundation Program Appropriation Request. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Governor, I do plan to abstain on this particular vote. There are some questions that I continue to have regarding parts of the budget, although I support other parts, so I would certainly like to vote for those, but I have some disagreement as I look at it with some other areas, so I will abstain.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, show by raised hand. All those opposed, by like sign.
Both care, so.
Abstention.
We'll now consider a motion to adopt amended Alabama Administrative Code Rule 290-2-1-... dot zero one pertaining to annual appropriation of school foundation programs. Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, show by raised hand. All those opposed, show by like sign.
Unanimous vote, Governor.
Thank you. We will now consider a motion to announce the intent to adopt amended Alabama Administrative Code, Chapter 290-4-1 pertaining to education accountability. Is there a motion to adopt?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, show by raised hand. All those opposed, show by like sign.
Unanimous vote, Governor.
Thank you. We will now select the Alabama State Board of Education delegate for the Alabama Association of School Boards 2023 Convention and Delegate Assembly. Nominations are now open.
Governor Wayne Reynolds, it's my pleasure to nominate Dr. Yvette Richardson to represent us, and we could not find a finer and more appropriate selection. I nominate Dr. Yvette Richardson.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Reynolds. Nomination is now closed. Is there a motion to confirm Dr. Yvette Richardson as our delegate?
I so move.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, show by like sign.
Unanimous vote.
Congratulations, Dr. Richardson.
Thank you. Thank you.
Dr. Mackey, do you have any public or legal information to share?
Governor.
Dr. Mackey, do you have a report?
I do have a report, Governor. It's going to be a little bit shorter this morning than I had intended, but I want to recognize a couple of folks, and then, as you know, of course, the board passed a lot of resolutions today. One of those has to do with Dyslexia Awareness Month, and we always really want... We wear red in honor of dyslexia awareness. We have a couple of special reading programs here. Bonnie Short, Director of Alabama Reading Initiative, is going to talk in just a second. Stay right there. And we have some parents here, and so at the end, I will say, before you leave, we want everybody who's come dressed in their red. I know we have a family here. We've got some other folks that have come for Dyslexia Awareness Month. Come and join us if you'll... We're going to gather in the front of the podium here. Anybody who's welcome to join us. Principals are welcome to join us, and we'll do a photo with the board still up on here, and then we're going to do some individual photos after that, too. But it is, of course, a very special month that we recognize a lot of folks. Our principals, Assistant Principals of the Year, our counselors of the year, essentially the outstanding counselors programs, our distinguished social studies teacher of the year, and then, of course, School Lunch Week is this week, and School Bus Safety Week is next week. So that brings me to our first item. Let's certainly remember, as many of you know, we actually lost a student last week who was waiting on a school bus, not on a school bus, but was waiting at a bus stop at her home. The funeral is actually today in Florida, and so it is sad that we lost a 15-year-old student. I remind everybody, and I would just like to take this opportunity to publicly remind people that no matter what you may be... are late for, it is not worth it to pass a school bus. It is extremely dangerous, and during that time of morning and afternoon, when buses are running, we all need to be especially vigilant everywhere, because you don't know when you're going to go over a hill or around a curve and encounter a school bus that stopped or getting ready to stop. And so I know we all keep that family in our prayers today, as they'll be laying their daughter to rest. Also, in school zones, I continue to hear about people who speed through school zones. We've got a lot of principals here today, and I know that's always a concern, but when you're near a school in the morning, just hit the brakes and slow down. It's not worth it, because it can be such a big problem for all of us, and certainly for this family who lost a daughter. Back to our dyslexia awareness, I want to mention that we've got some folks here from the Kiwanis Club. We're going to take a photo with them also at the end, and they may want to join us for the dyslexia awareness photo, if they will, but Keith Kendall, who is the Alabama District Kiwanis Governor, Dr. Dell Elliott, who is the Alabama District Kiwanis Service Chairperson, and Dr. Christie Sayers, who is the Alabama District Kiwanis Lieutenant Governor, and Challenge School Challenge Project. Now, they are working, they want to support us, and they're working with 79 schools across the state to provide special reading support, reading mentors, adults reading with children. It's a wonderful program they've done. This is the 100th anniversary of Alabama Kiwanis Club, and they made note for me to note this, so I'm going to, that Alabama is home to both the world's largest Kiwanis Club, the Birmingham Club with over 500 members, and the fourth-largest club here in Montgomery, who is sponsoring the Alabama National Fair this week, where they'll raise more than $300,000 for this and other projects throughout the river region. So we thank you. I'd ask those three folks from the Kiwanis Club if they had to stand, please, and be recognized this morning. And again, if you'd please stay with us afterward, we appreciate the work you're doing in supporting reading in our early childhood elementary schools across the state. Dr. Richardson was kind enough to make introductions between me and them last year, and they, again, want to help. And what we want to do is make sure every child is highly proficient in reading, and that's what this is all about, and we appreciate our outside partners in doing that. And Ms. Bonnie Short, who leads Alabama Reading Initiative, she had a video, she had two videos for us today. Our projector's not working, you've noticed that, so what we're going to do is show those videos. She has a part in the work session also in a little bit. She's going to talk about our summer reading impact, and so, Mrs. West, we'll work with you, and we'll try to show those videos in the work session, if that's okay. But Ms. Short, could you tell us a little bit about what we would have seen?
Well, I'd like to start with talking about dyslexia, and when we're in October, it's Dyslexia Awareness Month. We did create a video, and one of the things I'm really excited to highlight is, in 2003, I looked and I saw that the IDA Alabama Chapter, International Dyslexia Association, started in 2003. Here we are in 2023. We now have one of the most rigorous laws in the nation that came in 2019, and dyslexia is not something that is separate, it is something that is a part of the work that we do on a daily basis. So I'm very proud to represent the Alabama Reading Initiative for this work. I'm also proud that we are working in tandem with various groups. We have a wonderful program called the Certified Academic Language Therapist Program, where interventionists receive a very rigorous training. They have over 150 hours of training, and in addition to that, they've worked to getting 700 hours of lab work with students that they document. And these individuals are working in partnership with local reading specialists so that we can give schools the best support possible. We've highlighted some of that in our videos, so I really encourage you to be sure and take time to watch it. We'll put it on our social media as well, and we have some testimonials from some parents on there that we would like to show you, so please be sure to take time. I want to thank groups like the Kiwanis Group that works to put together support for students with dyslexia, because although we have the Dyslexia Advisory Council and IDA Alabama that we work very closely with to help support this endeavor, there are a lot of groups out there that we don't spend time with on a regular basis. We invite you to reach out to us. We'd like to be a part of the work that you're doing if you are a group such as that. And finally, I would like to celebrate the individuals who are at IDA Alabama today. There's a conference in Orange Beach, which I'll be heading down to after the board meeting today, where they're receiving professional development on supporting reading and math. They're also looking into the math aspects, so it's exciting to celebrate October for Dyslexia Awareness Month. I encourage you to get on our social media so that you can forward some of the information we've been sending out. And then I also have the Science of Reading Spotlight School information. We have a video for you there, and we are announcing who our Science of Reading Spotlight Schools are for this year, which is so exciting to always be able to recognize schools that we see are moving in the right direction with regard to the goals we have in the Alabama Literacy Act. And so, without further ado, I'd like to share with you who those Science of Reading Spotlight Schools are. In State Board District One, we have Coffee County's New Broughton Elementary, Crenshaw County, all of their schools, so they are going to be a school district in Crenshaw County. In District Two, we have Lee County Schools Borogard Elementary School. In District Three, Bibb County has Randolph Elementary. In District Four, Tuscaloosa City has Central Elementary. Jefferson County has Lipscomb Elementary, also in District Jefferson County has Lipscomb Elementary, also in District Four. In District Five, we have Montgomery Public Schools' Pentlala Elementary and University Charter School. Also, Satsuma City, Robert E. Lee Elementary. In District Six, Coleman County has Vinmont Elementary. In District Six, Calhoun County has Alexandria Elementary. In District Seven, Florence City has Whedon Elementary. And Russellville City Schools, all of their schools are recognized as a Science of Reading Spotlight School District. And then finally, in District Eight, we have Decab County's Geraldine Elementary, is how I have been corrected many times to pronounce it. So congratulations to these schools for being Science of Reading Spotlight Schools. Again, we ask if you'll share out the social media videos that we'll be posting, and congratulations to all these schools.
Great. It is good to get together and make a lot of celebrations, and we look forward to continuing to learn a little more about this in the work session this morning. Thank you for everybody who is with us. Governors, I wind down my report. I remind everybody that we will first have one large picture for dyslexia awareness. If folks will gather here in front of the dais, and then we'll kind of come in close together, board up here, and then we'll do individual pictures. I know the governor has to leave and get to another appointment after that. I appreciate her sticking with us. I guess I better wind and quit talking so she can get out. But let's do that picture, and then we do have individual pictures. That's gonna be a little more challenging. We actually had a great system worked out where we were gonna put up on the screen whose picture's next, and they had that all worked out, but the screen's not working, so we'll be using the microphone to kind of make sure we bring folks in. But we are gonna do them by district board members, so we'll do all the District One pictures first, and then we'll do District Two pictures and work our way through like that. Governor, that concludes my report today. I thank you for the time.
Thank you, Dr. Mackey. The next meeting of the State Board of Education will be held on Thursday, November 9, 2023, at 10:00 a.m., here in the Gordon Persons Building Auditorium. Is there a motion to adjourn? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor show by raised hand. All those opposed show by like sign.
Unanimous vote, Governor.
We are now adjourned.